So let's kick off this meeting. A joint meeting of the Plan Development Subcommittee and Town Council Meeting, Monday, July 18th, 2022, here in the Veterans Room is now 6:04 PM. Roll call, Councilor Dow is excused. DeeDee?
Yeah.
Councilor Laszlo?
Yeah.
Catherine?
Here.
And Councilor Dow is present. We have a quorum four zero, I'm sorry, four. All right, consider accept Plan Development meeting minutes of May 17, 2022. The first and second?
Make the motion to accept the minutes.
That's me.
And a second.
Okay. Any questions, concerns?
No.
No, okay. All those in favor?
Abstain.
Opposed? Actually Catherine, you'll have to abstain as well, you were absent that day. No, I'm sorry, you were excused, but you weren't here, so it would be a two zero two. Agenda item number three, consider accept Plan Development meeting minutes of May 31st, 2022. First?
Make the motion to accept the minutes.
Okay.
And a second.
Okay. Any questions, concerns? All those complaints? All those in favor?
Opposed?
What else? Three zero one. Agenda item number four, discuss the appointment of Catherine Bernadone for, Bernadone for, to the Plan Development Subcommittee for a one-year term effective August 1st, 2022, through July 31st, 2023, entertain a motion to recommend the Town Council for confirmation.
Convened.
A second.
Any concerns, any comments?
No, thank you.
Catherine, thank you for all you've done. I know it's your first year here, but I appreciate you wanting to come back and, um, thank you. Thank you. All right. You can't vote for yourself.
Yeah.
So, you can abstain from it though, so all those in favor? Three, and abstain, three zero one. DeeDee, uh, I got yours today.
Oh, you did, okay.
I did, so we'll put it on the 28th. Agenda item number five. Discuss recommend accepting the 2022 Mass Trails Grant Award for $500,000 to help design and construct the Quinabog Valley Rail Trail, allow the Town Manager to assign any related paperwork.
Convened.
You?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Dean?
All right, forgive me for the hesitation, I was just trying to deal with logistics. So, uh, this is all good news, I think we had preemptively, uh, discussed this during Town Council, uh, the Kansas Subcommittee and then Town Council, that we were encouraged by Mass DOT to apply for Mass Trails Grant. And again, I, I took that as a signal that it was going to offset Mass DOT's 1.1 million dollars, but the good news is, they're saying, no, it's not. And so it's in addition, and it can offset our local match. However, we still have to bring 20% of the 500,000 to the table. So rather than paying $400,000 in the local match, we're now going to pay the $100,000 in local match. I know Councilor Marcati often says, we are like a pinball machine with the numbers. And so just to review, um, it's a, it was a $5 million grant originally, we were told by the EDA, we had no shot at that amount, we needed to bring it down. We brought it down to 2.6. They said, you can't do anything at 2.6 without a match. We went to the state, the state said, yes, but you've got to try to get back up closer to the $5 million project, because they wanted to see it at the level of the Mass Seminoles level. And so we brought the project back up to 4.1 million dollars, with the 1.1 million from the state, 400 from us, and now we have the Mass Trails Grant, which brings us, because we have to throw in still that extra hundred, up a little bit to 4.3 million. As I said in the memo, should we have to return any funds, the first to be returned would be the Mass Trails. It's all good news?
It's great news. Questions? Councilor Steve's?
Yeah, follow up on that, that the match issue. So, we, as I recall, we had voted to take that 400,000 grant from ARPA, isn't it? And so, so that means, does that mean that we can take that money to something else?
That would be my presumption. I love the idea that it sits encumbered for the rail trail, Lord forbid, but that's my own personal opinion, Council, Town Council should do with it what they wish. And so, yes, it was raised from ARPA, it's, it's currently encumbered.
Oh, Councilor Marcati first.
I'm going to go ahead.
Oh, okay. DeeDee, go ahead.
Okay, just a quick question, says these dollars must be sent by, spent by June 30th to 2023?
Correct.
No exceptions? Will we be like on time? What, this is something we can't drag along and we'll be on time?
Correct. And so, uh, when we initially presented this to the Subcommittee and to the Town Council, the proposal was to use it for the design and a small portion of construction, and so we're using it immediately for the design portion, to be able to make sure we can spend it. And then there's also a clause in there that says that if you cannot spend your match by the time of the 23rd, you have the opportunity to get an exception. So I'll be asking for that exception, because they would like to see the credit to them of the whole 3, you know, whatever that match amount is, the entire rest of the project. So we'll be asking for a 34-month extension on the match.
I just get a little nervous, because it seems like nothing ever gets completed on time.
Okay, yeah, so, yeah. There's a lot of pressure to get it done, that's a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilor Marcati?
Uh, thank you. I just saw a couple of things. Back in February, we voted, we were going for a 1.7 million EDA grant. And at the time, you said the 20% match, 400,000, was on the EDA grant. That was February 7th, and February 28th, again, 1.7 million. Match goes 1.5 million, 1.1 million for the state, 400,000 from the town. The town's match was on the EDA grant. Eventually, on June 7th, you got a 2.6 million grant. So, that would have brought us up to 530,000. Now you're saying that the town's 400,000 is not on the EDA grant, but it's on the Mass Trails grant?
So just, uh, if I may, three chairs. There are many clarifications within that statement. The 1.7 was always an error, and we would come to the Town Council, we would correct the motion, again, the 1.7 brought, was brought back to Town Council. Again, we corrected it on the floor, because it was never 1.7. It was always 2.6, if we go back to the, the actual recordings of the meetings. The 400,000 dollar match can come from either us, or however we get the money. So EDA wants us to raise 1.5 million dollars, and we've done so through Mass dot and our local match, and now we've supplemented our, our local match with the Mass Trails. As long as there are funds that are not EDA, that are the local match, that's what they're concerned with, and that they come straight to the town. They don't want us, um, passing through Mass Trails funds right to them. We accept the money from those other funders, then our money, to then use for our match.
Okay. I want to ask them to correct the minutes on mine, because it still says 1.7 million.
In the minutes or in the agenda?
In the minutes.
Okay, I would certainly do that.
And I, I also have a concern about, it says no exceptions, June 20th, 30th, 2023, no exceptions. Now you're saying, you can have an exception, you can have an extension. Is that different than an exception?
Go ahead.
So, just as I had specifically stated, there's no exception to the work being done for the performance end date in the construction role, versus, there is an exception to when the rest of the local match can be spent. So their portion, they want the work done by June 30th.
And this grant, ability to spend money and then apply for reimbursement, so we're not going to get handed 500,000. You have to spend the money, and then they will just reimburse us, we're going to pump to 500,000, correct?
Correct. And that's how, uh, it's a pretty standard operating procedure for most of our grants these days. Uh, we set ourselves up with the CDVG grant to work that way, it used to be a front-loaded grant, but it's actually better fiscally, financially, audit purposes, for us to be able to, um, be reimbursed. And then there are other grants, like a PAR grant, which are sticklers about making sure that it's a reimbursed grant very clearly. So, yes, we're familiar with this model, we're comfortable with it.
And it says that do not begin this project or match activities until you receive confirmation stuffs one and two. So, you think that's going to come in pretty soon? Because otherwise, it's going to keep pushing us closer and closer to the dashboard.
Yes, I think I'm, I'm pretty good at following orders when it comes to the grants. I have an excellent team downstairs. Abby makes up a, um, uh, with the contract that comes in, a sort of order of operations that need to happen in order for us to secure the contract, and then what the milestones are within the contract, so that we don't lose any dates.
And I also have the same question as Councilor Steve's. 300,000 left over, is that going to go back into ARPA? I would already let it go back to ARPA. I have one last thing here, and I'm sure there's an easy answer to this. According to this contract, Tom, Michael McCall, I certify that I am President, Chief Executive Officer, Chief Fiscal Officer, Corporate Clerk, or Legal Counsel, Town Manager and Medical. So I'm sure there's some kind, something that you're going to work around, or something that covers up. The Town Manager is Chief Administrative Officer, he's not an executive officer, he's not a fiscal officer, he's not a corporate clerk or a legal counsel. I know in our charter, he negotiates all contracts, but this isn't the charter, this is on the state's. Must be a workaround, I just wondered about that one.
Just clarify, go ahead.
Okay, I, that is standard contract language, so that's called the Authorization Form, that was provided by the state precand. Um, I'm presuming that that language was just dropped in there, pro forma, um, and I will verify, uh, what I, my personal opinion would be is, he is that role on behalf of the Town Council, because you authorize him.
Well, it's specific.
But if you're not comfortable with that, we can make sure that the language is, but again, um, I don't, it gets standard language.
Okay.
Okay, that's all.
Thank you. Councilor Laszlo?
I just a quick question on the ARPA money. The 300,000, does that take any action on behalf of the council, or the Subcommittee to bring that money back, or has that been? In other words, it's one of those things that, we talk about it, we know it has to go back, and then it'll die on the vine? Or should we put it on the agenda to bring it back, because, you know what I'm saying? What's the process?
Yeah, so I was going to, uh, recommend, admitting this motion, to basically state, Quinabog Valley Rail Trail at the end, insert, and reduce, um, the local match from 400,000 that was originally, um, approved, I'll have to find the date, but it says, that was originally approved by the Town Council on this date to 100,000, which represents 20% match. Or do we?
What I'm saying is, do we do anything that says, 300,000 reverts back to the ARPA fund? Where there's a clean cut that the money that was appropriated by the council would move the council back to your ARPA fund?
Don't you think it would make sense to affect like the next item on the agenda?
I mean, it doesn't have to happen right now.
38, 30,000, 200,000.
At some point, I thought, there would be some formal
Yeah.
moving of the accounting.
Can we just make that, amend that motion to state it was, that 400,000 originally approved through ARPA funds to 100,000? Would that be okay? Would that? I, I don't think there's any.
Do we have to say, we're returning from, um,
Yeah.
some language like that? And just so you know, uh, we voted on that on February 7th.
February 7th.
That was the first time we spoke again, about, on February 28th, but I believe on February 7th.
Well, I have no problem with just throwing it in one motion. Uh, Quinabog Valley Rail Trail. Let's see here, da-da-da-da, and reduce the local match from 400,000, or, local match.
Using ARPA.
Utilizing ARPA funds.
This is still the local match, and we want to make it very clear that we're, we're not telling the state we're taking our local money away.
Right.
Fred's saying, we're just returning, we're, we are taking, so we're, we're going to put, we're going to re, designate something to the effect of that we're, we're going to replace 300,000 of the ARPA funds with this money, and put the remainder, put the remaining ARPA funds back into the ARPA.
I agree with, I understand what you're saying, I, you got to change this wording in here, to show that you're taking that money back out of it.
Yeah, it's a little weird, yeah.
Is the term unencumbered, sorry?
Go ahead.
Is the term unencumbered or?
Encumbered is not even, uh, encumbrance is not a word, it's an ironic name we use in government, but if you were to actually look it up, I don't think you could find those. Maybe encumbered, maybe not encumbrance.
I think encumbered is the word. Unencumbered is the opposite.
We're just replacing, we're just sending 300,000 back.
Like, I mean, I think we understand the intent, you don't want the 300,000 just sitting out in grant world.
Right.
So what would be wrong with the, the motion that I just made?
Unencumbered is in fact a word. Encumbrance may not be a word, that's, that's the only thing, forgive me.
Go ahead.
So you want to unencumber, and, and unencumber 300,000 dollars and return it to the ARPA?
So.
If that's true.
Yeah.
So, okay. So I'll get friendly amendment?
That's an amendment.
That's an amendment.
All right, so how would this read? Or, I will, I agree with what John's saying.
Unencumbered on 300,000.
300,000? Okay, we could add that into, into that motion itself. All right. Any questions on that? On the amendment? Oh, it was a friendly amendment. We're all good with that? You got a friendly amendment? Okay, good to go. All right, any other questions on that? Yes, ma'am.
Clerical correction, encumbrance shows up in the dictionary?
It does, I would, Jeremy's there, you know.
That I swear, I can not find in the dictionary, one day.
We'll probably have it posted, by the Town Council. The only question I have here is, this is, um, that was my question about moving the money back in ARPA, I have no problem putting it right back in the ARPA, I've already got it written down for things to do tomorrow, uh, because we need to put that money back in there, yeah.
Um, I kind of want to make a statement earlier, about the duration of the, um, somewhere in the text, I don't remember which one of the grants I was reading, it's somewhere it says that the deadline is 36 or 38 months, but elsewhere it says it's five years.
It, it does. We are sticking to.
I mean, we should get it done as fast as we can, but
If I may.
I just wanted to point out that there's the conflicting dates.
So the, the timeline we are using is the 34 months from, uh, the date of the award construction needs to be complete. And you have to have initiated it within, initiated it within 16 months.
Yeah, I see that.
And so that's, that's what we're using.
Which makes sense, I just, I just wanted to point out that it's conflicted, even in the grant document, so.
Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed or zero? Number six, discuss recommend adopting the vote resolution authorizing the town of South Pierce to participate in Massachusetts commercial property assessed clean energy program. All right, Ms. Dean, there's no, as far as vote here, you were just discussing recommending?
Oh, I, I would say that there's a, a vote on that, if you could make a, um, motion to consider adopting, recommending the Town Council adopt the, the vote resolution authorizing, et cetera, et cetera.
All right, discuss recommend adoption, adopting the vote resolution authorizing the town of South Pierce to participate in the Massachusetts commercial property assessed clean energy program, and entertain a motion to recommend the Town Council for confirmation.
Convened.
Okay. The, I'm assuming the Town Manager has to sign off on a bunch of documents as well? Okay, so unfortunately I have to make.
Uh, I, I guess it would be helpful, thank you for adding that.
And then I'll just do this, and ask for a friendly amendment, and have the Town Manager to sign off, any related paperwork, entertain a motion to recommend the Town Council for confirmation. It was a friendly amendment, so. We're good with that? Any, Ms. Dean?
Yes, thank you for adding that. Unfortunately, Mr. Dolan from Mass Development doesn't look like he's on the call, which is the whole reason I got the go-to meeting in the projector. Uh, he met with us to discuss, uh, potential incentives for commercial buildings in downtown. Uh, Mass Development has a fund, it's a private investment fund, that is strictly used for doing energy upgrades. Um, 51 towns have adopted it throughout the state, only two projects have been done. Uh, if you had a chance to look through the PowerPoint that was provided in the packet, uh, it was pretty straightforward. Um, it's, um, taking the investment, it's attaching it to your assessed property value, it's then creating another tax bill, a betterment, so that you are then freed of that extra loan on your profile, on your portfolio, to then free you up to potentially be leveraging your funds elsewhere, or to potentially be positioning you with a higher credit rating, or, you know, it's, it may serve different people different ways, but, um, people who are in the development business see this as a, um, as a useful tool for them to be able to do energy upgrades without it bogging down their finances as much. Um, we had Rachel Carney on the call, and, uh, we let, uh, the Treasurer know the details. Um, it doesn't sound like a burden, they're very familiar with using munis, uh, they easily will help us set up a few, um, details in the system, if and when a project ever came to be. Keeping in perspective, two projects have happened since the inception of this fund, so I think that it may be more of something that we have as a tool in our toolbox, whether or not people want to take advantage of it, but it's another way for us to be there for our commercial property owners, or our mixed-use property owners that want to do upgrades.
Okay, guys, Councilor Steve's, I'm sorry.
I'm a student property, so instead of getting a bank loan, they're coming to the town for a loan, essentially.
And it's not the town's money, it is a private fund.
So how, so how are we accessing, so how are we accessing this private fund? What's the town's responsibility if the borrower defaults on it? Or whatever, I know you mentioned that it ends up on taxes, but, and we've seen all kinds of, like, derelict properties that defaulted on their taxes, and basically, we ended up helping to build them. So how does, how does this work?
All, uh, risk falls on the fund, so they don't expect the town to take on any risk. The administrative burden, they're trying to keep as minimal as possible. Mass Development is basically the finance arm of the state, the last thing they want to do is burden the states, or the, its towns and cities with extra risk. Uh, and so, they're literally just trying to find other tools to help promote economic development in the state. And so, there are, um, the, the presentation hopefully walked through very clearly, and the, and the language and the authorization states very clearly that it is, you know, the burden of the, of Mass Development, it is the risk of Mass Development, however the language speaks, I, I thought it was pretty straightforward.
Any other questions? Councilor Marcati?
Uh, yeah, I kind of have the same concerns that Councilor Steve's has. The first thing I noticed is that the town takes on the responsibility of putting a lien on the property, so we send out the bill to the owner. I'm here, I'm the partner, paying back this money. We get the money, we pay them, you know, the, sorry, case management. The other thing I noticed is that it says that if the property is sold, the remaining case assessment and case lien stays with the property and transfers to the new owner. Wouldn't that sort of like scare possible investors of wanting to buy something they know they're going to have to take on a lien?
No, I think that that's the most logical, if you were to think about your own property. If you're going to do upgrades and get, so what we do in our town that we're all familiar with are these commercial rehab loans, or the housing rehab loans, right? We've been doing them through CDVG for a long time, and how do those models work? It's a lien against the property, it stays with the property, because you're not increasing that person's personal value, you're increasing the property's value. And so it should be whoever is at the property holds that lien. And so they would inherit not only the lien, but the increased assessment, or the increased appraisal, or property value. So they're able to then leverage their own, you know, financials against an increased assessed property, or increased average property.
And the other concern is that if somebody defaults. And a lot of times, the town takes over ownership of the property. That's not going to transfer to the town, huh?
So if
There have been cases where the town has taken ownership.
Yeah, go ahead.
That is a great question, so I, we should verify with Rob Dolan, if we were to inherit the, the, the property, if we would somehow inadvertently become responsible for one of these projects?
That's all I have.
That's all we've got? Okay. Any other questions? Okay, uh, besides the question that has to be, by, followed up on. Um, all those in favor? Opposed or zero? All right, uh, agenda item number seven. Discuss recommend accepting the Massachusetts Office of Travel and Tourism Grant for 8,000 dollars. And I'll, I'll just add this in here. And allow the Town Manager to sign any related paperwork.
Convened.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Dean?
Uh, so some of you may have been at the SVP meeting, or saw the SVP meeting, um, that was recorded from the, um, LaSalle Center. We discussed the, the Mott Grant. Uh, strategically, we've applied for the Mott Grant for the Historic Walking Tour. We have doubly applied through the, um, One Stop for Growth application process, which allows you to submit five applications. One of the five was for the Historic Walking, um, Tour Technical Assistance for 25,000. So, we've hedged our bets, and I didn't know how the chips would fall. I had, I think I told you all that we would rescind the Mott Grant if we were awarded the, the state grant, but we will not know the state, not the state grant, so the Massachusetts Office of Travel and Tourism Grant, or Mott Grant, we are being awarded right now. In four months, five months, we'll know whether or not we're being awarded the One Stop for Growth, uh, it's the Massachusetts Downtown Initiative Grant for Technical Assistance. So that one's valued for more, this one's valued for less, this one, we have to come up with matching funds. But what if we didn't get the one in the future, when we passed on it? So strategically, what we've talked through is, or what I've suggested to the SVP, and they said that they would go along with it, is if we accept the 8,000 grant today, for every bit of fundraising that happens, we say, there's a caveat, these funds will either be used for the design match right now, or in the future for construction. Then we have to raise at least 5,000 to get match one for one, so we'll get, if we can get up to 5,000, we'll get another five for 10 total. If we can get up to 8,000, we'll get the other 8,000, we'll get up to 16,000 total. All the money will be used for someone to help us walk through the, um, the Historic Walking Tour through the downtown, designing the, the kiosk, the QR code readers, the, the whole, you know, the theme, and, you know, create that whole, um, the big picture for us to then be able to hire someone for construction in the future, hopefully through another grant. If we do get, so then we fundraise, 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 until we find out whether we got that other grant. If at that point we find out we didn't get that grant, then we've hopefully reached our 5,000, and we go forward with the 10,000 we got. If we didn't get the other grant, and, and that was the, if we didn't get the other grant, if we do get the other grant, then we say, okay, all the money we've raised to date, we're going to use towards future construction, we hold it in the cap, and then we use the 25,000 technical assistance from the state, or for the, from the MDI, to then go forward with the, um, the walking tour. And so, that, I feel like works in our best favor, either, in either scenario. So I hope that the town will support me, I know it's sort of a little bit confusing. Um, I pride myself in trying to simplify things, I'm sorry, that's not very simple.
Councilor Steve's?
Okay, so, so can I just say, correct me? So the, if, if, the MDI grant then does not have a match?
Correct.
Um, so, and I take it that from what you're saying, if I'm to be correct, the, the SVP will be raised, will be doing the fundraising, is the system coming from the town?
Incorrect. So the job would be to solicit businesses, the community, and, and, uh, it would be, hopefully, with the support of the SVP funds.
That raises a question, though.
Exactly.
27?
That, that, that raises a question in my, who's raising this money? SVP?
Yeah, exactly, so if the town is putting its name on this grant to do this project, but it seems like it's an SVP project, it's a town project, whose project is this, and who has all the responsibility? And ultimately, who has responsibility when it comes to, if we have issues with funding, you know, and the state for some reason wants to call money back, or whatever, that was a good one, I don't know. Um, and, so I mean, I don't want the town getting caught, getting stuck holding the bag, or something, it's not even a town project.
Go ahead, Ms. Dean.
Yeah, it's a good one.
Go ahead.
So, he's a town project, so I feel like my ear, what the different bodies and the partners and whoever the community we're working with's priorities are, my, I've heard loud and clear from the Local Historic District Study Committee, from from the Historical Commission, from the SVP, from Counselor McKee, lots of people who were in favor of a local Historic Walking Tour. And this has been since I came on board. There's that beautiful map that's in the South Bridge Business Site right now.
No, no, Ms. Dean, I think we all understand that. But what you're saying is, who is raising that money? Who's raising that $5,000? Yes?
I am.
You are. How do you do, being a town entity, you can't raise, you can't, donations, if I'm not mistaken, you can't accept donations. But through, now under, through South Bridge Business Partners, if they wanted to raise that money and then grant it back to the town or gift it to the town, that would be a source. But from my understanding, us as an entity, as a town, per se, we can't raise funds like that.
I mean, the council has the right to vote to accept donations.
Yes.
But I don't think town employees have the right to create some money.
So we would be-
That creates, that creates a bit of a conflict.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so it would be exactly that. Of course, I would never be accepting donations in my office. Or me, right? And so, excuse me for, excuse me. Yeah, no, no.
Go ahead, Ms. Dean.
It's a very important clarification. All donations would be brought to town council for them to accept as all donations are within town government. And you would be putting them into a fund that's designated. Karen would set up this account that's dedicated to the project. And then it would be, you know, obviously, we need to clarify what the purpose of the account is. Again, it would be clarified it's used for strictly designed or if we are awarded the MDI funds, it's used for construction in the future. And we would hold it for an undesigned amount of time.
So I, so I've got the SVP. I understand that, and you gift it to the town, or the town gets gifted, we have to accept it or not. I understand that. I guess, looking at this paragraph, the third paragraph, maybe I'm reading it wrong. I guess part of it was thinking the SVP was doing this fundraising for us. On behalf, per se, and on behalf of the town, SVP would then gift it to the town as a entity. Speaking with South Bridge Business Partnership, they agree if we accept the Mott Grant and fundraise between now and the time when we find out about the MDI grant, if awarded the MDI funds, we turn the Mott Grant, we turn back the Mott Grant and reserve the funds raised to date for future construction. I guess where I got it was speaking with South Bridge Business Partnership. They agree if we accept the Mott Grant and fundraise between now and the time when we find out. So I'm just under the impression it was South Bridge Business Partnership through the whole thing. Yes?
So-
Please tell me where I'm wrong, because obviously-
No, forgive me for misleading that it's the South Bridge Business Partnership that's going to fundraise. They are my sounding board for this community project. They've been my supporter for a lot of these grants. They write letters. They are the ones who've advocated for a kiosk since day one.
Okay.
And so as someone who looks to them for advice and guidance, I think that that's, that was certainly, speaking with a community body, they agree that we should go ahead with this. This is a good strategy.
Okay. That answers my question on that end. Counselor Stevens, anything else?
I understand what you're saying. I think we need to be careful that, that if we're going to vote on it, we need to be very careful that we don't, that we don't blur the public-private partnership on. Because I don't want to start getting into this bizarre situation. I'm not sure who, but, because I know, because I know obviously that the SVP has done a lot of good things sometimes. And we, in the past, we have worked with them as a town government, and we should. But I also don't want to get into the issue, the issues of, you know, whose hand is in, whose hand is in tiller? And who's actually controlling the money? And then where is it actually coming from? Who's ultimately responsible?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Well, I truly believe Ms. Dean when it comes to-
I do, yeah.
Dude, no, no, what I'm saying, hear me out. I do believe Ms. Dean, what she's saying, all that kind of stuff. My, I guess my concern at this point would be if, I'm assuming you would actively reach out for donations for this cause, correct? All right, I just don't want to overstep the ethics side of the house. Because I'm not really sure if we're allowed to go out and solicit for donations on behalf of the town. SVP can and gift it to the town. Just drawing that, but go ahead, Counselor.
Just a quick question, not even a question, it's more of a statement. If Pig Dean, the Economic Development Director, is partnering up with the Town-Town Partnership or any other entity in South Bridge, and that entity is doing most of the running around and fundraising, although we know that you will be involved with the conversations in the partnership. And all monies that come in go to the town council for acceptance. It's pretty straightforward unless you want to, you know what I'm saying? Am I correct in saying that?
Go ahead, Ms. Dean.
So I know the SVP is incredibly busy. I actually was just telling Jasmine that they're, as a core, and you heard me probably talking to her. As a core, right now, they're doing the brunt of their, all of their work. They're not, they haven't been able to recruit from the members to be able to help out. And so I don't want to burden them in any way. I'm happy to be able to solicit for funds if I'm allowed. I will verify with the grant and with the Ethics Division happily. I'm so transparent about this stuff. The last thing I want to do is get us in a pickle. And so I will verify as soon as possible that that's an approach we can take. And if not, if we have to partner with a community organization to do that, whether the SVP would be willing to do so.
Thank you. Okay, any other, any other questions? All right, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? DeeDee, did you have something?
Well, I'm-
Okay.
She sort of answered it when she answered.
Thank you, thank you. All right. Agenda item number eight. There, let me force it in here. So obviously, this was a full agenda item here. Because, and Ms. Dean can, matter of fact, if you would like to discuss it before I read out this motion on why it wasn't on here.
Um, so we got three bids on Thursday afternoon and we were waiting to hear back from our, the lowest bidder. And so it wasn't until today that, and I was out on Friday. So it wasn't until today that I was able to bring the motion forward to Counselor Adams. I have the documents from the bidders for you. So this is a list of bid holders, it's a spreadsheet. And then these were the three bids. And again, the three bids. There you are. There you are. You're welcome. There you are, you're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Dean.
You're welcome. There you are. Jasmine, uh, who do we give to our landlord? You sure? Do you want to answer it? You want to answer it?
All right. With that explanation. Discuss recommend acceptance. Lowest bid of $415,000 to complete the Capella Park and McCann Fields upgrades using the park grant funds. Prove entering into an agreement with the JAM Corporation and allow the town manager to sign all related. Someone?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Dean?
So we have to go through all of the contract details, right? We have to make sure this person comes forward or this company comes forward with the right qualifications, the payment bond, the contract. So there's details between now and when we actually can provide a notice to proceed. And we just hope that all goes well.
Counselor Stevens?
Have we ever gotten to work with these people?
What was the question?
Have we ever gotten to work with these people?
I don't know if DPW has, I'm happy to know of them. But their reference has listed many park projects in around Worcester, two park projects in around Worcester and throughout Eastern Mass. Varying budgets between, you know, anywhere from $200,000 on up through $800,000.
We have a timeframe for when this-
The bid stated we want the work complete by November 3rd.
Miss, DeeDee, go ahead, please.
I guess my question is, if it's not done by November 3rd, what's the consequences? So the contracts have clauses in them. I could look up what that exact language is and get it to you. Hey, let me come to find it. Yeah, I'm just curious. Yes, so-
Go ahead.
I know that the, one of the common phrases is that, you know, we always see that. You know, we're always, we're always providing extensions, et cetera. In all due, you know, with all due respect, I do think that these are extending waiting times with supply chain issues trying to get, one of the big things was fencing, trying to get fencing. And we, construction demands. So we all hope for the best that they can stay on schedule. But if there are genuine extenuating circumstances, then they are allowed to come to the town master for a change order. They don't have to have finished the work until next June, but we want to see it done by this fall.
Thank you.
Counselor McKee?
Uh, thank you, checking through you. Just going back and looking at everything that's been done, everything that worked towards this project.
No worries.
And I was just wondering if at some point I could hit on something, what exactly we have worked for towards this entire project? Because I looked back, in March, we voted about $95,000 for lighting at McCann Field. In January, we gave BSC $55,000 on taking ambulance for that spirit. We also voted in 2021 for the park grant, $400,000, which was 75, 70% of the total cost. And that was for skateboard park, handball, playground equipment. In 2015, redesigned. And I added all that up and it came to about $720,000. And then we also said in there that we're using FY '20 CDVG money. We were awarded $825,000 that year. And that went for West Street, McCann, and Code Enforcement. And I, I'm not sure, but I think McCann, all of that was getting $80,000. So when you total that all up, it's $800,000. So all I'm asking for is an update. What exactly are we putting towards this project to date?
So I think to answer, I have no problem with just an update. I believe you sent off something with an update of what we had spent so far in McCann. If we could just update it from, I guess, this point on. That okay, Counselor McKee? Because I know she sent us all that information. It'd be good for the new counselors to have that information as well.
I don't know how complete that update was. We talked about a few things, but not the entire project. And this is entire Capella Park and McCann, McCann Field. Playground, skateboard, handball, playground equipment, 2015 redesigned. I'm talking about the entire project. Now, this grant here, this bid here is $415,000. But that seems to me, just adding all this up, that's only half. But we are committed to this project. But I don't know for sure. I was just asking, maybe we could have an update on the entire project? That's all.
Just the whole McCann, Capella Park?
The whole McCann.
I think you sent that off, I believe you sent that off last year. Yeah.
I may have sent, I may have sent off a more detailed last year is what you're referring to.
Yeah.
The email I sent, Counselor McKee, just for reference, sent an email asking if he could get an update on projects and preferably, could he get me in front of the town council once a month for economic development updates? In the meantime, I sent him an email addressing his specific questions. It sounds like it wasn't to his satisfaction, that he would like more details. Forgive me, the $55,000 was for design, just right off the bat. Here you go. CDVG fiscal year '20, $80,000. That was for the fields. We're using, we will be coming to, that was within this email. We will be coming to the town council for a request to be able to expand the infield as part of those funds. That will be a very small few thousand dollars. The rest will be for replacing fencing, backstop netting. It will be for shade structures, most importantly. It was initially for scoreboards also. We're feeling like if we don't have enough funds, that will be the least of the priorities. And so fiscal year '21, CDVG fiscal year '21, you are correct. We voted $90,000. It was $95,000, it's for lighting and security. That's not to be mistaken for lighting on the infills, which we call sports lighting. And now that we've learned recently researching this, we are doing pathway lighting to be able to improve security so there's more visibility between the fields there. And then the park grant is for $400,000 from the state, 70%. We are the other 30%. And $55,000 of that is the design.
Okay. It's an awful lot to take you there, but. The other thing, I was looking at this Capella Park and McCann Field upgrades table of contents. It goes from instructions to bidders, bid form, bid mod, and then nothing else. And I can tell it stops at, as far as I can tell, it stops at bid form. The rest of it's missing, is that, that's all for a place?
I provided you the agreement and the drawings. I don't have an understanding of what the town council's desires are, whether you want the full 250-page bid. It's not, it's, Vaughn used to say, give them the six-page agreement. And so I tried to give you a little bit more. And so if you could maybe create precedent for me, or if you could maybe, as they come up, tell me if the subcommittee satisfied the materials they're provided.
Maybe a scope of work or something? I know, looking at these blueprints, it's hard to read. I can't, yeah, compare if I left any of that. Because the blueprints really don't tell me what the scope of work is. Something like deadline, I would, I would, I don't see, no. I don't want to see the entire 250-page video. I'm just pointing out that from this only approved bid mod and the rest of it's, I mean, existing conditions, concrete equipment, I'll see furnishings. I don't see what we can see some of that.
It's probably a nice, large document. I think we had this discussion before about, I believe Counselor Katrona had asked for a, just to go back, I'm not sitting there saying that we, I should, I think it'd be nice to have, be available possibly in the economic office. But I mean, we, I think we discussed this last year about the amount of pages it would take to print out and take a look at these documents. Because we don't ask that from everybody else. We really don't. From scope of works to, I believe Counselor Katrona brought it up and I thought we discussed it back then about the amount of pages it would take and amount, trying to get this out to all the counselors. And I think our solution was, if anybody would like to take a look at it, let it be available right in that department head's office and take a look at it and then print out what you would like to have at that point in time. I just think that would take up a lot of time constantly for all departments to send all this stuff off.
Would anyone want to look at work on that?
I try. So I, as a taxpayer, as we all are in this town, I pay these people really good money to trust them and some of the decisions. I understand there should be oversight and that's why I think it should be available in those department heads, in those departments. But I have to give some faith and trust that they're going to do it. We're not all experts here in this field. And then we start critiquing every little thing that happens. It becomes, instead of a town project, it becomes a David Adams's project.
You know what? Your president of our ring, it's a trust but verified.
And that's why they, it's available down in the department.
Yeah, but maybe make it digital so I can look at it.
Something we can do? Yeah, go ahead. And it may be on the website.
Good point, yeah. Forgive me if I didn't state the obvious. All bids are available online through our town website. If you go to Business under Bid Opportunities, my bids are right there. You can see under Economic Development, you click in and see Capella Park, 1111. So, and if it's unpublished at this point, you can just ask me to republish it or you can ask me to send you the documents electronically. And just to remind-
I was just kind of curious what kind of information.
Yeah, just, and just to remind what you approved in your original motion for the park grant, the elements that the park grant requires be in it are the handball courts. So you're having two handball courts back to back over where that strange quadrant is behind the adult baseball field that will finally be covered over with surface and grass so that it's no longer a driving hazard. It's definitely a safety issue. It will then have a, not a concrete sidewalk, but a, an asphalt sidewalk just to create a difference between walking and driving. And that will follow around to where your ADA parking lot will be and your entrance into the park. The other element will be an ADA swing. Then you'll have coming around by the Little League field, a meandering path that has to meander pretty long to try to get the grade for ADA up to Capella Park where you'll then have your skateboard. There'll be some landscaping done. There'll be some, if we can then integrate the lighting, that will be through the CDVG. Then you'll have the cameras through the CDVG. And it will all tie together very nicely.
Thank you, Counselor McKee. Counselor Marketti, Counselor Lazo.
I agree with Chairman Adams as far as documentation. There are plenty of eyes and ears looking at the bid process, and to go through one of the, one of those processes is like extensive. And I'm not interested, you know, I don't think anybody's going to play with any bids or anything like that at that level, but what Counselor Marketti, in you asking what you're asking, I feel like it reminds me of when we did the middle high school. Nobody could ever understand a bid document for the $65 million middle high school. But what we did was, in, in the office, in the foyers and stuff, if you were doing a project, right away, there would be a picture or a schematic of, what's, what's this going to look like? And then, we would have a schematic of, here's where the ball fields are, here's the high school, here's the middle school, cafeteria, pictures of, of what the project's going to look like when it's completed. Even if it's a schematic where it's more of an artist's rendering than a, you know, per square foot type thing. So for myself, when people walk in, say, oh, we're doing McMahon Field. Yeah, okay. But if they see something that, and you're, basically, you're strutting your stuff as an economic development department, look what we're going to be doing. And the town is, is proud of this. I think that would, I know, answer a lot of questions when you turn around and say, everybody sees a grant, $8,000, $20,000, $250,000. But when they see some sort of rendering where you say, what are you doing at that field? Then all of a sudden, you show that walk, and you show that lighting, and it looks like a safer area to be. I think that would go a long way with the average person in Southbridge. And I don't know how you get to that point, but I know we did with the middle high school, which people had a great idea before we even laid a brick or any pavement or built anything. They knew that this was coming. And then when it was done, it looked like the artist's rendering. Just communications-wise, I think documentation of a bid document is going to tell, it'll tell me something, that's what I do, but the average person won't, won't know the difference between that and an egg salad sandwich. Because they're going to look at it and go, I see the picture, I understand the building you're on. But when you look at numbers, you know you're spending money, but you don't really know what you're getting for your money. Just a different approach.
Okay. So this is, Jasmine, or Counselor Rebus, sorry.
I just have a quick question about, do the plan with the wayfinding signs, so kind of identify what the new elements were?
What was that?
They do not.
What was that?
This would be nice.
Ms. Dean.
I put in my capital budget, a request for wayfinding signs specifically for the new Capello Park upgrades. I feel like it would be great to kind of cap it off with a more pronounced wayfinding sign at the entrance there, so hopefully that gets approved. If I could also dovetail on what Counselor Lazo said. There is a new software we're using in our office called Civil Space. It's an add-on for the new Civic Engage website, and I have projects built inside of there. I need to get them more visible, because I've got in there the Capello Park, I've got in there the rail trail, and they are a little more of a structure stuff kind of website. So it might help for people to be able to access information. It has the feasibility study for the EDA grant, if you wanted more information. It has the design, if you wanted to look at the rail trail or at the, the Capello Park. So, you know, that might be the one-stop shop that I should have referred everybody to.
You've done, you put it on social media. All right. Counselor Rebus, anything else? Counselor Steves? Counselor Lazo?
I just, that's a great idea. I mean, if you look at the Adams approach to the Monument Park, one blueprint, one picture, a thousand words. And everybody in town wanted a copy of his, and he ran out of it. But anyways, that just, that's what people, they hold on to, and they say, that's going to be ours. Jasmine, to her credit, when she ran her campaign, she did a drone and a oversight of the field she hung around with. She walked through Henry Street. You get a feel of what she's talking about, and I think that's where we need to head in that direction. I think that's a great idea with the, with the technology.
Any, any other questions on this? Concerns? Discussion? All right. All those in favor, post. All right, discuss, recommend extending the redevelopment authority executive director Mark Karen's service agreement to June 30th, 2023, to account for one week's service gap ending July 15th.
So.
All right, Ms. Dean.
Would the, would the subcommittee consider making a friendly amendment for the agreement to be with, and insert, with Capital Associates LLC, Mark Karen?
Yeah. We're not contacting, we're not contacting, he just happens to work.
Okay, hold on a minute. Go ahead, Ms. Dean.
So going back and forth with the town manager, the bid submission form was with Capital Associates. And so, we really should be entering into the agreement with Capital Associates. We should be rendering payments to Capital Associates. And so, I'm trying to, before we make any payments, move it in that direction.
And then Capital Associates will pay Mr. Karen?
Yes, and I've sent him an email letting him know I've got this agenda on the table.
So.
Insert after executive director agreement with Capital Associates LLC, Mark Karen. Oh, good. He didn't read it.
No, it's not.
It's not, it's not what's on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
So we, just forgive us real quick. I did ask the top front office, because I didn't see this until it was posted, that I need to start looking at the agendas before they are posted. Not that I, I'll catch everything, but I think we got, we, we, that, that's been rectified. So, we, there's some things missing here and there. So, so the motion should, just a friendly amendment here. Discuss, recommend, Town Council extend the redevelopment authorities executive director agreement with Capital Associates LLC's Mark Karen. Uh, Mark Karen, this is...
I guess you're going to work that.
All right, thank you. To June 30th, 2023, to the account for one week's service gap ending July 15th. Is that all right? Because this is only talk about a one-week gap?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. Friendly amendment?
So.
Thank you. All right. All right, so we got a friendly amendment on here. So you just wanted to go to Capital Associates LLC. Check. All right, discussion? Yes, Counselor Marketti?
So, you're extending this to June 30th, 2023? I thought we voted on this on June 6th. So, when is contract ended on June 6th, 2023?
As with all contracts, until whatever requirements are needed for a contract, can we enter into it? And so, he needed to secure his insurance and whatever other details before we were entering into the agreement, so I think it was June 22nd by the time we were entering into agreement with him. And then, we discussed that he was taking one week off, and I'd said that in good faith, you're supposed to be working full-time for the town, and so I would either dock one week from this first one-month performance in July, or, you know, I wasn't sure what the options were, but I'd still like to see him be able to see through the entire $1,000 of the contract. And so, the alternative is, yes, we will still just dock him. We'll only pay him for three weeks right now, in July, and then in the end, and then we'll stretch it out from that last week in the end of this week.
But in the end, he's, we voted $80,000 of our money for this position, so in the end, he's going to get $80,000, whether he works that extra week or not.
No, I am only paying him based on performance every one-twelfth of the years.
Then I think you mentioned that.
And, and the one-twelfth this month, I would say to potentially look at, we need three-quarters of that one-twelfth, because he's only working three of the four weeks. And so, you know, do we leave that extra week on the table, or do we just do something like stretch it out for another week? So I feel like it would just be a gesture to stretch it out that week.
I feel like if you had something previous to...
All right.
One other thing that I would like to see, which is, we talked about when we hired Mr. Karen, was that, it says that in our, that we would, we would see his proposal, and we have yet to see that. It said that, you know, let's see, the contents will only be made public after the evaluation process was completed. So I'm going to take it that the evaluation process in hiring him has been completed. We're supposed to see the agreement, the request for proposal, the proposer's proposal, the other attachments to the agreement. And at the time, we're in the agreement. So are we going to see anything else, like his proposal, what he's going to do for the town, and in the RFP that he submitted?
Go ahead, Ms. Dean.
So that would have all been available. The, the RFP is a very straightforward, based on X qualifications, and then we grade the qualifications. So you could have, again, public document, the, and I, I, it seems like we need to make sure you have access to these documents more readily. So the RFP was a public document. He responded to the RFP. Within the RFP, he stated basically how he would meet those means and measures. You know, we ask very, sort of, we ask questions in a way to, you know, will, how will you promote diversity in the town? How, you know, what, what, based, based on your experience, you know? And then he states whatever experience he has, or whatever projects he's worked on, et cetera, et cetera. And so, I'm surprised that we weren't able to let you see that.
Well, when we voted on this...
Yes.
In the adendum to the RFP, it said, the RFP would be open in public, however, this will not be a public meeting. Proposals were confidential, the contents will only be made public after the evaluation process was completed.
And so.
So since then, you're saying that it's all public now, like a book?
Yes, so your question was very unclear to me. So what you're reading is the language within our bid documents that states, yes, we have to withhold this from a public meeting until the evaluation's been finished. Once we choose them, then everything becomes public. So yes, it was public as of when you voted for it.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so, but that's, I'm sorry, I got confused.
And where would I find this exactly? Like, Word page on the Town's website?
So the RFP was posted until the bid was, or the RFPs were done being accepted. Now I have the agreement in my office, and like all public documents in town government are available for your viewing. So I'd be happy to email it to you if you'd like, if I all you...
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Dean.
Does the Town Council welcome Mr. Karen to come present on behalf of Capital Associates at the July 20th?
That'll be left up to the chair.
Town Council needs it.
All right, any other questions? All right, all those in favor, post. And have us all present. Let's do it, John.
So.
All in favor? Post. There's now 707. Thank you.
Thanks.